Let's go ahead and get started with our work session. I know Mr. Jordan is on his way, Ms. Shinholster is on her way as well. So it is 5:33 by Dr. Lee's phone. And so we're going to go ahead and get started with our June 23, 2020 call work session. And I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the road. And there is Mr. Jordan.
Dr. Lee? Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
All right, we do have a quorum present. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager's, our interim city manager, for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a couple of different things to talk about during the work session tonight. First of all, this evening at the regular meeting, you all will be voting on three appointments to the Allied Arts Board. One is a reappointment of Ms. Brenda Brierley. One is the appointment of one of your fellow council members, Ms. Shinholster. And then the third is Mr. Jay Woodcher, who is actually here with us tonight. But before we have Mr. Woodcher come up and speak to you for a few minutes, the executive director for Allied Arts, Brian Rinko, is joining us via Zoom. So Brian, if you will unmute yourself and share with us anything you want to about these three appointments and take any questions that council may have of you before we formally introduce Jay.
Thank you, Hank. I would like to introduce Mr. Woodcher, who has been nominated for your consideration, council, by Allied Arts Board to replace outgoing board member Eustace Palmer. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Woodcher for the last couple of years now on several projects in the public schools, bringing arts opportunities to their students. And Allied Arts Board and myself believe that Mr. Woodcher would be a valuable addition to our board. Mr. Woodcher was hired as a consultant by Dr. Price to help him with a fine arts program here in Baldwin County. He worked with Dr. Price for many years previously at Atlanta area and brings a wealth of experience to our youth and educators here in Baldwin County. He is not only a highly decorated Georgia music educator, but also a nationally decorated one as well. Jay brings a wealth of knowledge, experience, and also community service to our community. And I'd like to give him an opportunity at this time to say a few words.
Jay, come on up to the podium and share with council anything you'd like to share with them. You all received his bio and resume from Melba about two weeks ago, I believe it was. But I did want you to have the opportunity to meet Jay and take any questions, him have the opportunity to take any questions from y'all that y'all had any interest in asking.
Just a little history. I don't want to take a long time to speak with you because I've listed it pretty much on the bio for you. But my relationship with Dr. Price goes back 30 years. She was principal in Fulton County Schools, and I was music coordinator. And we became just immediate friends. She's always been such a strong arts supporter. And she's probably the best, one of the best principals I've ever worked with and for sure the best superintendent I've ever worked with. So I just keep following her around. When I retired from Fulton and she moved on to Clark County and became assistant superintendent and an associate superintendent and hired me to work with them because their fine arts program was in shambles. So the first thing I did was a curriculum audit and sort of set forth a blueprint. And then when she came here, I did exactly the same thing with Baldwin. Clark County was so smart that they hired a person full-time to replace me. I was just a part-time consultant. And now their arts program is really coming along well. I've served on a lot of boards. I've held a lot of leadership positions. And I'm just so grateful that for the people that guided me when I was younger and helped me make it, getting a scholarship to go to college, otherwise I wouldn't be here. I can promise you that. And I just like giving back. I like Milledgeville because Milledgeville is about giving back. Allied Arts is about giving back. One of the most enjoyable positions I held, and I actually still officially hold it, is with the Spivey Hall Education Committee. I was the chair when it first opened in 1991. We serve over 15,000 kids a year for free or reduced programming for them to come to concerts in the hall. And I'm proud to say that the executive director and I worked together to build that program. And it's a national model today. That's just what I like to do. I still teach lessons privately, although it's online. I do a lot of volunteer work and recently joined the Rotary Club as well. My wife and I enjoyed the Milledgeville area so much that we sold two houses to move down here. And we now are residents, proud residents of Milledgeville. So I won't take any more of your time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
Anyone have any questions of Jay?
Very impressed with what all you've done. And I think your accomplishments, without stating, but just what you've done, the areas you've been in. Very, very impressed.
Thank you. That's very kind of you to say that. And I'm not afraid to work hard. It's more about, my mother was talented. She could look at a piece of music one time and never have to look at it again. I never knew what that was like. I had to work. I really had to work hard at it. And so to me, the joy that I get out of seeing children learn and seeing the accomplishments that they can reach, you know, if you put the bar here, that's where they're going to go. But if you put the bar here, that's where they're going to go. I did that as band director. I've done it as a supervisor for teachers. And, you know, I just believe where you set a standard, if you teach them right and care enough about them, they're going to get there.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, sir. We greatly appreciate that because with the mayor and council, one thing for sure, we want to garner people that understand that the board's work is totally 100% on your part. It's not a paid position, but we want you to give it 100% while you're there. So we thank you for just being willing to serve.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, also tonight, you'll be voting on the adoption of the FYE 2021 budget that we have worked through in previous work sessions. In your book tonight, you had some reprinted pages that need to be used to replace the same page number in the original budget proposal that you were given. These pages changed based on our discussions during the work session. And the pages that you have in your book were made a part of the budget that was available for public review after those changes were made. In the general budget, you have a new page five, which is where we changed some calculations as well as a couple of data entry errors on my part. Page 43 has two of the three city agencies that we fund in there. And those changes were made based on the discussion at our last work session. And then in your water and sewer budget, you have a new page seven and a new page 19. Those pages, for all practical purposes, have been zeroed out, but I'm leaving those line items in the budget because it is becoming more and more important, I think, for us to be able to track not only revenue, but the cost of utilization of the water and sewer system at Central State. So those account numbers will stay in there so we can actually track any work that we need to do to that water and sewer system out there. You probably remember that at the end of December was the end of the five-year period that was created by the state conveying the water and sewer system to the city of Milledgeville. And based on that, we started installing meters to get ready to charge DPHDB and those entities that purchase property from the Redevelopment Authority for their water and sewer use. And plus, we need to be able to track what those maintenance costs are out there to make sure the revenue that we're generating out there is keeping up with that. So you most likely will see those account numbers and those pages again in budget amendments during the course of our 12-month fiscal year that begins July 1. But they were zeroed out as per our discussion in the last budget work session. So those are in your book. If you would replace those pages in the original budget proposal that you were given, and as I said, those were put in the budget that was available for public review, I believe, last Monday, right, Bo, if I'm remembering that date right, somewhere along in there. They've been available for at least a week for people to be able to review. And that budget, I think maybe for the first time, that budget was also put on our city website this year, even prior to the proposal being passed, so that it was available for public review there.
It's been available for a year for what, three weeks?
Right, right. Yeah, those changes in the last week. Thirdly, I wanted to share with you that based on our service delivery agreement with the county and the water and sewer agreement that came from those negotiations, we have begun the transfer of the portion of the water and sewer system to the county that is part of that agreement. We actually have done our final reads in the Plantation Chase subdivision and removed our transmitters that are on our meters there that are utilized in the automatic read meter system. And the county has installed their transmitters on those meters. And they will be giving us a read on the water usage from 10 o'clock this past Friday morning up until the point in time when some valves are turned and the water that's going to that subdivision is the county's and not the city's. The process for the airport area will be started most likely July 2 with the final reads there. And then those transmitters coming off of those meters and the county contractor coming right behind our staff and putting their transmitters on those meters. And we again will true up those readings based on that. And we anticipate, you know, things can change when you're dealing with a project this large, but we anticipate that the county will have made their tie-ins and done their valve inserts that they need to. And most likely somewhere around July 6, we will turn a valve that cuts our water off and they will turn a valve that cuts their water on to service Plantation Chase and all of the areas around the airport. And if you remember, part of that water and sewer agreement is also them purchasing water from us. And during the negotiations, we shared with them that, you know, they didn't have to purchase water from us for the north side of their service area. They could purchase it from us for wherever they needed it. And most likely, that will be on the south side of their service area. But even before that particular valve is opened, if you remember, we did it where the system is being turned over 25% at a time per quarter for a year. So we will be billing them for 25% of the water that they are to purchase from us wholesale at the beginning or when that 25% of those customers and infrastructure is turned over. That is the easiest area for it to happen. We're going to have to do some master metering and do some valve inserts in the next area, which most likely will be the area north of Sinclair Dam Road. But if you remember, the agreement also said that any type of meters or appliances that had to be installed, we would split the cost of those. And so we will start working through that process with them. I'm working with the county manager on communication information to get to these customers. We have already uploaded to them the information for all the customers that will be transferred throughout the entire year. So once the piping and the meters are transferred over, then they can pick up the customers associated with those. And I anticipate that our swap over most likely on July 6 will go fairly easily. And this will be, this actually will be a little more than 25%. It probably will end up being closer to 30% during this first quarter that they will be, they'll be taking over. So we're kind of hitting the low-hanging fruit first because of them already having water in that area. And then we will go from there. But it's been a good, been a good working relationship. We had some small communication issues last week, but we worked through those. And the thing that I'm most interested in and want to make sure is happening is that the customers, for the customers, it's as seamless as possible. And we just simply say effective July 6, if that ends up being the day, Baldwin County is now responsible for your water and sewer service. And then what we will do is we will do final billing on those customers, close those customers' accounts out, and then refund them any deposit that they have remaining on their account that was not necessary to cover any balance that they had. So just wanted to let you know that that process had started. And we actually moved it back just a little bit because of COVID. And so July 1 was the time that we had agreed to begin the beginning of the first phase of the transfer. So we got a little bit ahead of our schedule, which is good. And because we may need some of that other time on the back end when we look at these areas where we're going to have to install master meters and valve inserts and those kinds of things. Kevin Veal and Robert Hadden have done wonderful work in this process so far. And I anticipate that that will not change. Any questions about any of the water and sewer transfer piece? I will keep you, continue to keep you informed on that and where we are in terms of the percentages that will be turned over and how those play out throughout the course of the 365-day schedule. The other piece of service delivery that I'll be working on with the county fairly early in July is our anticipated SPOSS payment. And SPOSS collections for May were still fairly strong. And actually, what's reported for May was really April collections because it lags about a month behind. So we will continue to talk with the county about that initial SPOSS payment that was part of the service delivery agreement. The last thing that I have to talk about tonight during the work session is based on some information that I sent you all last night, we have seemed to have a resurgence of requests for speed control devices around the city. Obviously, the charter says that those can be installed anywhere that mayor and council vote that they can be. And what has been the procedure in the past was a petition from residents in the area that were requesting the speed brakes and the speed control devices. I say devices because it could be rumble strips, it could be speed bumps, it could be risers, it could be a number of different things. The two that we have received requests to consider are Reef Circle, the area of Reef Circle behind the city water tank, and the area of Pine Ridge subdivision, Turkey Run, that street in that particular subdivision. I told Bo, one of the things that I realized when we started going through this process is we need to develop a blank form that we send people to utilize when we tell them to get signatures because there's specific information that we need. And we got most of the information that we need from the citizens that signed it for the Reef Circle request. We've had some issues with determining actual areas where people who sign the request for the Pine Ridge subdivision live. And I think that's simply because some of that property in there is rental property. So when you look it up on the tax assessive website, you get the owner as opposed to the tenant that's living there. So we're going to have to do a little bit of homework on that just to make sure the people who signed the petition do in fact live on the Turkey Run road area. And I anticipate that they do. But when you all did this back in 2012 for the Mayweather subdivision area, whoever developed that form that you have a copy of in the packet of information I sent you, that's a really good form. So I anticipate that we will be using that form or something very similar to that in the future. So when we get those calls, we can simply email that form to folks. And that way, we know that we're getting the correct information. I've had a very preliminary conversation with Chief Swiker and our public works director, Tim Thomas, on these areas. And basically, my reason for bringing it to you tonight is to make sure that we are proceeding in the direction that you would have us go. And also to discuss two other areas that have come up in discussions that I've had with some of y'all, and that's the Doles Boulevard area and the Lakeside Drive area in Carrington Woods. What my initial thought and process is, is to try to identify all of the areas that we think we want to do this or look at at this point in time. And have obviously a traffic study and maybe even a traffic engineer come in and tell us where it would be best for us to put these speed control devices, especially on the Lakeside Drive and the Doles Boulevard area because of a lot of curves and hills in those areas. Turkey Run's pretty flat, pretty straight. Reef Circle is fairly flat. But because of some of the vision limitations, as you're going around the circle, we probably would want to make sure that we were putting those in the correct area, too. And of course, the charter says that when we install these, then the proper warning signs are installed at the same time. So obviously, we would want to do that and make sure that we were doing that in a manner that a traffic engineer would share with us. I've got Chief Swiker and Mr. Thomas here with me tonight in case y'all have questions of them. But my biggest question for y'all is, what are your general thoughts on this? Do you want to continue to follow the same process that we have followed in the past to do these? And what are your feelings on consideration of Doles Boulevard and Lakeside Drive?
I brought Lakeside Drive up probably two years ago. And Carrington Woods is split up between, as far as the district, between myself and Mr. Mullins and Ms. Shinholster. And the three of us talked briefly about it, but I had main interaction with Frank Ball at that time. And he had a pretty good bit of information that he gave to me that I still have. And it was in reference to using risers, speed brakes, as opposed to a speed bump, which you can negotiate them at a certain speed, basically. And at that point in time, was really looking at the, what is considered the S curve coming from Jefferson toward the Carrington Woods pond. But in lieu of what the county has done with their annex, I also have a new concern, and that is on the other end of, and that's coming across the dam and the traffic that would still be flowing west on Lakeside. But we've got a blind spot heading toward the ingress and egress that they have put in for the new annex. And that's topping that hill. And then you come to the bottom of the hill and car pulling out and somebody running 40 miles an hour, which is over the posted speed limit, but it still happens every day that that'll end up causing a bad wreck. And we don't want to see that. So there's, in my view, there's become two specific areas. In the information that he gave to me, it seemed to be, I think this was maybe DOT recommendations, that a series of three be put in. And that that breaks the speed, but also doesn't allow someone enough time to get back up to another speed. And that you space them out. I can't remember exactly what the suggestion was. But a lot of different things were looked at at that point in time. And I really would like to see that looked at again, whether we start on one end because it's, you know, something's going to be happening there pretty quick and look back at the other end and go, what?
One of the things that I have asked Tim to do is to bring forth some ideas and plans on, I think it's an absolute necessity for us to make the entrance into the annex a right-in, right-out-only entrance. If you don't, you're going to get traffic backlog trying to turn left into the entrance as they turn on Lakeside off of Columbia. And you're going to have a greater potential for the collision that you were talking about as people come over the hill if they're trying to turn left out of that driveway. So that's a piece that I would like to also work into, looking to see where these risers need to be, if they still need to be where we think they are, where we thought they were before, or if we might need to move them based on that, as well as obviously make sure that the warning signs and devices, whatever we need to do to let folks know that are going west, that that drive is, once it becomes active, that it is there. So we'll certainly do that. Frank left me most of his files when he left, so I probably have that information in the files somewhere. If I don't, I'll let you know, and I can get copies of yours. But he left me a lot of electronic files, and I bet you that those are probably in Chief Swiker or Mr. Thomas, y'all have anything you want to say about Lakeside?
Y'all just know that traffic's going to certainly increase with the annex.
Yeah. And, you know, I think in talking to residents, there's always been an acceptance of it being a thoroughfare, no different than some of the other thoroughfares that we have. I think that just the danger of speed and the fact that in a lot of those areas, you don't have much of a right-of-way. And, you know, you've got an immediate ditch. So anybody trying to walk even So anybody trying to walk even from one house to another, it can be a dangerous situation.
Well, we will certainly, we will certainly look at that. I think, I think we've been able to identify well enough the residents on Reef Circle that have requested the one there, so we can, we can start looking at the studies that are necessary to determine where it would best be that those are put. I'm going to come back to you with, if it appears based on the work that we need to do for the Pine Ridge subdivision area in terms of confirming that the folks who signed the petition do in fact live there, then we will, we will carry forth with it, just like we are on the Reef Circle one, in terms of trying to do the studies necessary to determine where those need to be. Any discussion at all, or what are your thoughts on the Dole's Boulevard area?
Let me ask a question. So Mr. Thomas has been giving you great input on this as well here lately, right? Not just total, every electronic thing we've had from Mr. Ball, but Mr. Thomas input?
Mr. Thomas and I have had one conversation about these at this point in time. But these just simply came up in the last 30 days or so.
I know that there was a letter written, in fact, it was to all of us on Pumping Station Road where the Arcadia College kids are, because they don't stop for that stop sign. So I know, I'm not, I don't think that there was a petition thing signed by the people over there, but I know that there was a letter written and some of them had concerns.
Back to the Dole's Boulevard, I can definitely see a need there. Just a little bit that I go through there, I see pretty good speeding. And I know Ms. Shinholster's right there at the end of the runway. I know she sees them.
At the beginning and at the end, whichever way.
You know which way they're coming, huh?
My biggest concern is that we've had a lot of kids to move in, some of the houses that were formerly rented to college students. Those are families that have kids anywhere from two years old to 12, 11 or 12, and they all have bicycles and they're all out riding. And then they come that way and they have skateboards and they come that way. And, I mean, we just have to yell and scream, all of us, those of us who are still there, because most of the houses are empty right now. So I was thinking about that when you were talking about getting signatures. I'm like, from who? But there's only a few houses now. But there are students that still come through, I guess people that still come through looking for, maybe to see if anybody's back or whatever. But I see a lot of strange cars there that don't really live in the neighborhood. But when they come, when they turn off Montgomery to go past my house and around that curve, they can get up to 50, 55 miles an hour more, right in that. And then sometimes when they come around that curve and know they got that straight stretch to Montgomery, they do the same thing. So it's always a fear that one of the kids are going to get hit. So most of the time in the evening, me and the other neighbors that are there, we kind of sit outside and try to slow the cars down, try to get the cars to slow down when they come in there. Some do, some don't. But, you know, we try to yell and get the kids out of the road, too, when we hear them coming. So whatever I need to do, if I need to get a petition, we'll do that and get as many signatures as we can. I know that Mr. Thomas has been out there just to take a look at what we could possibly do. I don't even have any idea what could be done, but I do know that something needs to be done, right, especially in that area, in that straight stretch, to slow those cars down. So we won't end up having a child get hurt right there in front of my eyes.
Well, we will, we will proceed with those four. We'll also look at Pumping Station, Ms. Wallman, and bring back to you most likely a plan if we end up, if we do end up using a traffic engineering firm, that we'll come back and report that to you, because obviously you all will need to approve that in terms of the contract. And Tim and I, and Chief Swiker and I will continue to have conversations about this. And, I mean, the only reason I say Tim and I have talked about it in the last week is just because that's, that's when he and I have talked about it. He may, he probably most likely has been out and looked at some areas before. But at this point in time, he and I have only had conversations about this in the last week, two weeks and a half. So we will proceed that way. And we'll bring the report back to you. We will notify the folks in the Reef Circle area that we are doing the necessary studies to determine what can be done there. And then we'll work on our due diligence to identify these folks in the Pine Ridge subdivision to make sure we know which particular parcel number on Turkey Run they live in, to be sure that they are requesting what's, for an area that they actually live in. I don't, I don't see that it's necessarily necessary to get petitions from the Dole's Boulevard Lakeside Drive folks. I mean, what the charter says is that they can be installed anywhere that y'all approve for them to. I think the petition is a piece that's utilized so that when residents bring them to us, we have that as the beginning of our process. But if you as council members have an area in the city that we need to look at, then I don't, I don't personally think a petition necessarily has to be a part of that, because the petition is not part of what's in the charter. So we will, we will carry on from there based on those instructions. Any other, while we're looking, any other areas that any council member would like for us to look at?
I've seen folks flying down Lawrence Road over there in front of the Lawrence Building and the kitchen. That may be something to consider. There used to be speed brakes.
I was going to say, there were speed brakes through there, and then they came up. But now that, you know, that traffic is increasing, we may need to look at trying to do something.
There used to be crosswalk striping in front of the chapel as well. I think there might have been speed breakers out there as well.
There definitely were some in front of the chapel. I remember those being there. They were kind of, they were, I don't remember about crosswalk striping, but I do remember the speed brakes being there. Well, that's all, that's all that I have. There's just a couple of other things that were in your packet that I'll just identify to you. I mean, you know that they're there. But we actually did, we put an advertisement in the 2020 Graduation magazine that you recorded, did. I wanted you all to have a copy of that and see the ad that was in there. And I have been, ever since they've been coming out, giving you all the weekly operational summary reports on COVID-19 from the North Central Health District. You have one from last Monday and one from yesterday in your packet for you to take home and read. We don't have, we don't have the final logistics worked out on it yet, but the mayor and I were on a conversation, on a conference call this morning. And we may have the opportunity to work with the State Department of Public Health and Emory University Hospital to get some additional testing in the city limits. And we will continue to work on that. That presented itself fairly quickly yesterday to us. And we had a good conversation with someone from Emory University Hospital this morning. And we're going to see if we can, can work that up and try to get that done fairly quickly. Most likely, it will be two, two testing dates. And there may be some potential for it to also be a research project for Emory University Hospital to help us have a better idea about, of some of the census tracts, where we may be having a greater prevalence of positive tests than others, so that we can maybe look at the possibility of trying to get additional education programs out there or PPE available for people in those census tract areas. As you can well imagine, with HIPAA, it's very difficult to get that kind of information. But if we become part of a research project, we may be able to get it easier. We obviously will not get the people's names, but we will have a better idea about where in the community they live to try to get, get that information to them. The Department of Public Health actually put out a video last week that GMA has made available to us, and I'll be sharing that with you all if it's not too big to come across email. But we'll be working to get that information out through the various means that we have in order to be able to try to get that out through our social media, through website, through churches, through, any way we can get it out. You all probably remembered that when we had our first emergency meeting on a Sunday back in March, when all of this started, one of the people that I quoted was Dr. Del Rio from Emory University. And I have continued to read Dr. Del Rio's information. And just this morning, read information from Dr. Del Rio that said that the only ways that the disease will be slowed down is if people wash their hands, social distance, and wear a mask. So that's what we've got to get across to people, wearing a mask, obviously, when you can't control your social distancing. So those are the three things that I think we've got to get out to our folks in our community. Yeah, we can say that a large percentage of our people are on positive tests or in facilities, but we have staff coming in out of those facilities that are then in other parts of the community. So we will continue to work on the educational piece for that. We are, for all intents and purposes, back to normal with city business. We still have the front door of City Hall closed. People can come up and see us through the business office doors by appointment, but we are still doing a lot by phone and by Zoom meetings. And there've been a couple, a couple of things that we've realized as we've gone through this process that we may need to look at the ingress and egress of City Hall and the business office, anyway. And this may help us look at that and bring to you a plan that we would like to recommend to you and you would approve. And I don't see that coming anytime soon, but it is something that we'll be looking at in terms of trying to, trying to control and limit the amount of foot traffic through those two areas, just simply because of the things that we deal with in those areas. So with that said, Mayor, that's all I have.
One quick question. Just talking about here, you controlling your traffic in and out, are we doing it all over the city?
We are, we are doing it in the east annex. The only area for ingress and egress there is the staff door that's in the alley. We don't have a lot of public traffic over there, because really, the only public that anybody sees over there is when Shay is talking to people about business license, and she actually comes over to the business office to do that. In terms of the economic development annex, the way we've got it set up now is when people come in, they are signing in, they are calling to notify upstairs that they are coming up for a permit. And what has been happening up until Monday was a staff member will come down, take a payment, take the payment. If they don't pay online, go up, print the permit, and bring it back down to them. We have, we have purchased some plexiglass panels that are being used at the reception desk in the permitting office on the third floor. And we got those in yesterday, and unfortunately, three of the five were broken. So we had to, we had to contact that vendor, and they agreed to date to send us three more. But the two that we have were put up on the third floor today. I put them up myself. And so I would hope that within the next five to seven business days, those other, those other plexiglass panels will come in and we'll be able to install those. We have one for Ms. High Tower's desk down in the lobby of City Hall. We have one, we went ahead and purchased one for the receptionist desk in the first floor of the Economic Development Center in case anybody needed to be there. And then we have an additional one to go upstairs in the permitting office at the reception desk for Ms. Mayne Neal in that area. So to answer your question, Mr. Mullins, yes, we are, but we're also putting things in place where, where folks can come up and do the business that they need to with the offices in the city and our, and our folks that are dealing with them are protected. They are, they are not allowing people other than firefighters into any of the fire stations. Chief Swiker does have his lobby reopened, but obviously, all of that occurs by somebody talking through a glass, anyway. He had to open his because he had to start court back this past week. And he, Major Hudson had actually constructed some plexiglass panels for them to use in the courtroom, and those are in place. And Chief Swiker and I were talking just today, as a matter of fact, of, we, my church has utilized a cleaning service that can actually fog an area. And the fog is a high alcohol content, which means when it hits a surface, it evaporates pretty quickly after it kills any viruses it hits. And I suggested, Chief Swiker, we might want to do that each week in the courtroom as we have a court session, and then that session is over before the next group comes in. So we are controlling ingress and egress, and we're trying to put things in place as much as possible to, for people to be able to come up and talk to us face-to-face if they need to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We do have a closed session scheduled on here, and we need to talk about something quickly. We don't have, but.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes to do it. So at this time, I need a motion for us to go into closed session to discuss personnel and legal matters.
Is that going to be long enough?
But we got to discuss, it's an issue we need to.
It will be long enough to give you the material. It won't be long, too.
Right.
Just so you will be able to back in further session later on in the agenda. But at least, at least like to hand out this material, so maybe during the meeting.
We can't wait just go, go into session one time? We can't just go into, just wait, go in there?
Yeah, I mean, that's your, that's your pleasure. I want to pass out the information, anyway.
Right. We need, we're going to do it anyway. We do it one time.
So are we going to amend the current agenda and bring it up top to go into closed session before we get towards the bottom?
Okay. You can put a prayer on the regular meeting agenda that you would like.
We'll do that, because we actually don't have it. And it's going to have to be discussed probably before we get towards the end with what you have to put out. So if there's nothing else, no other questions in these last few minutes of the work session? Everybody, does anybody else have any more questions? Dr. Lee, did you have any questions? Can you hear us? I can see everybody.
Dr. Lee, anything?
Yeah, I hear you. I'm good.
Okay.
No, I'm good. I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Got a flip through number, too. I kept the same ordinance number.
So there's no other questions in the work, called work session. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second.
All right. Meeting adjourned. All right, meeting adjourned.